The listing of matters on the agenda are those reasonably anticipated by the chair, which may be discussed at the meeting. Not all items listed in fact may be discussed and other items not listed may also be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by law. This meeting will be livestreamed for cable. A recording of this meeting will also be posted on the West Bridgewater Community Access Media website, wb-kam.org. We'd like to welcome Paige McTuck, student representative tonight. Welcome. Some personnel news up the top.
We are very excited to have two new social work interns here with us at the middle senior high school. Kelsey Gilbert, who is going to be here tonight, had a conflict that she couldn't change. She was hoping she'd be able to change, so she's going to actually come to December meeting. But we do have Anna Miranda, who I'd love to welcome up so she can introduce herself to all of you. This is Anna.
Hello, good evening, everyone. My name's Anna Miranda, and I am a licensed social worker. This is actually my first school setting, so previous to this, I actually worked in various different diverse populations. Most recently, I worked in a hospital, so did a lot of social work there. Prior to that, I worked for the Department of Children and Families, done some correctional work, some shelter work, so a lot of different populations. So I'm really excited and happy to be here and happy to be part of the team to help the students. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Page. I'd like to get an approval of our minutes from our October meeting with a motion to approve. Second, all the table. Some recognitions, Mrs. Page.
Yes, so we are excited to recognize a few students. Our first student is for the grade eight, Project 351. It was founded by Governor Deval Patrick in 2011 and now convened by Governor Charlie Baker. Project 351 fosters unity and strengthens the ethics of service through the engagement enrichment of an eighth grade ambassador from each of the 351 schools in Massachusetts. The educators collectively in the middle school come together and nominate the person with whom they feel is valuable for this position. And for the class of 2026, their selection was Kaylee Pearl. Congratulations, kiddo.
Thank you.
Nice job. So, yeah. She's going to hate me, but, fine.
Okay. I just wanted to say I'm grateful for the opportunity, and I wanted to thank Ms. Page for introducing me, the school committee for letting me be here tonight, and all of my teachers. So, thank you.
Kaylee will be meeting in January with other area, all the students who are selected. So, she's excited, and she's not liking me right now because she didn't want to speak. Do you want to just go right on? Okay. And then we have the Abigail Adams Scholarship. Just briefly, I'm sure most of you are aware of what the scholarship consists of, but I wanted to make sure, just to read a little bit about it. The following students, I will be calling their names, have qualified to receive a four-year John and Abigail Adams Scholarship upon acceptance to a participating Massachusetts public institution of higher education, including the four undergraduate campuses of the University of Massachusetts, all nine state universities, and all 15 community colleges. In order to receive the scholarship, students received advanced and proficient on their MCAS scores and were the top 25% of students in their district. Current seniors did not have to participate because of the pandemic, so not all current seniors chose to take the MCAS, so our numbers are a little bit smaller than usual. But still, a great honor for these students. We congratulate the following students for opting to take the MCAS and being recipients to the Abigail Adams Scholarship. First up, we have Emily Cookshank. Benjamin Fichette. Natalie Frederickson. Some of the students did tell me they were unable to attend, but I still want them to get recognized. Sarah Morrell. Matthew Outerbridge. Thomas Shidi. Darlene Soto. Isabel Waldron. It's like the Emmys. And receiving for Isabel Waldron will be her mother, Mrs. Waldron. Congratulations. And finally, Austin Zhang. Thank you.
Recede us right now, and students can head out, so they don't have to hang around.
Thank you, guys. Congratulations.
Congratulations, everyone. Good job. Mr. Flynn.
But sometimes, I mean, we've had kids who are fully vaccinated who have tested positive. And so sometimes parents have called and said, hey, I, you know, I signed my, my student up for test and stay. I know they're exempt because they're fully vaccinated, but can you test them? And I thought, you know, absolutely, like, that's reasonable. And, um, and so, um, when asked, you know, we absolutely just included them. I mean, they had already given consent and all of that, so I was testing them. Um, a couple of weeks ago, DESI, um, came out with their, every once in a while, they come out with these frequently asked questions, and they said that we're not allowed to test, um, the fully vaccinated students in this test and stay program anymore. Um, which is a bummer. I mean, you know, I, I think that it was really reasonable, and parents appreciated having that, you know, I don't know if, you know, for risk factors or, you know, household concerns or whatnot, um, but yeah, that, that's something new. Um, that was two weeks ago, um, October 25th, um, that they said that. So, and I don't know why, I don't know what the-
Well, is the rationale because people that are fully vaccinated aren't testing positive for COVID? Or are they? Or are they?
No, I mean, we have seen people test positive who are fully vaccinated, you know.
So to, to answer your question, they are on, I mean, they were set in, I think, July or August when the, yeah, because they listed the exemptions, the bus exemptions, if you're fully vaccinated asymptomatic. So they're, and I think we've linked them to our website.
The guidelines for, for the, um-
Close contacts?
Close contacts?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. But, but we're not tracking, like, within the school, if you're a close contact, just anywhere, if, that's different than if you're a close contact in school. So like, if I'm a close contact at home, then I, I can't do the test and stay at school. I'm just trying to figure out, like, so, because we're following a different, are we, or are we not following a different set of guidelines for close contacts and quarantining than like the state is, or like the-
We're following the DESI guideline, guidance.
Okay. I guess I, I mean, I've been very aware of the, the separate mandate for the masks, which are different for, in the schools than that DESI's put out than in like, you know, the town. But I, I haven't seen, like, clear, I, I guess that hasn't, I don't, haven't seen that as clearly defined.
Okay. I, I can send it to you. I'll just go to, I have to go to the website and-
And I believe that the, the Board of Health, I haven't had as much communication with the Board of Health as I did last year, um, but I do believe that the Board of Health is, is doing the exact same thing. I believe that that's still the case, you know, I, I do, um, when there is an exposure or, um, you know, families call and they have a close contact within the home, I generally refer them to the Board of Health because it's not a school issue, and I believe that the guidelines are the same. So they're, they're from the state.
But then they don't have the option to come back to school? They have to stay home for seven days?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. I, I did see, like, when the state changed the quarantining, um, but that the only, like, state laws about quarantining were if you were coming outside of the, um, traveling outside of, like, the country, that there weren't any, um, like, laws passed about, like, internal, that the, they were just recommendations. But I, I could be wrong. I guess I'm confused by what is actually, um, required and what's suggested or recommended.
Right. We're, we're following the, the DESI guidelines that all schools are following.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. All right. Parent-teacher conferences. Normally, we wouldn't have to bring this up because we just do the same thing we've always done, but last year, we did have virtual conferences, and there was some discussion about that for this year. Um, but with the conferences, the timeline remains the same. It's the Friday before the Thanksgiving week, and the Monday and Tuesday. I didn't want to get into times because each school's are going to be a little bit different. Um, but on the Friday, um, November 19th, that is in elementary or K-8, and the middle, senior high school has the full day of school, but the rest will have the half day. So the decision was, after a lot of talk with the administrators and others, that really we value the in-person experience for our families to come in and meet with the teachers, see the school, see the classroom, uh, and make that real interpersonal connection. So with that being said, we decided to go, uh, fully in person. Um, if there is a, you know, true medical need or a concern or something like that, we ask families to reach out to the building administrator, and we'll certainly work with every single family. Um, so I just want to put it out there. I did send an email out to all the families in the district stating our expectations, and I haven't heard anything back, so I think people are understanding, and, um, probably glad to get back into the building, which is a good thing. So we're kind of back to normal, which is great.
It is a great thing. I was just catching up on my emails today, and I apologize, I didn't see this before, but in your email about the teacher conferences, you do make a statement in there that, a reminder that all visitors to schools must wear masks, and there are no exemptions. Um, that, that actually isn't in the mandate for, from DESI. So where did you come up with that?
Masks are, visitor, all visitors are expected to wear masks in school.
Correct. All visitors are expected to wear masks at school.
So they won't be allowed in without masks to conferences with our teachers?
There's nothing in our policies or in the mandate that says visitors to the schools must wear masks, and there are no exemptions. The policy, the mandate from DESI says all visitors are expected to wear masks.
According, talking to our lawyer, they felt that since masks are expected to be worn, and there are no except, exemptions for visitors to school, they can participate in conferences virtually. So that's what we're doing.
Okay. Well, this, I mean, this statement in this email, it doesn't follow the mandate or our policies that we have in place.
It's our expectation they wear masks.
Okay.
When they're, when they're around our kids and our staff, um, we want to keep them safe and protected, so therefore, that's, that's our, the school district's expectation.
Okay.
If the committee wanted to vote otherwise, I will-
Yeah. I think it should have said then, um, visitors are expected to wear a mask.
Rather than-
A reminder that all visitors to the schools must wear a mask, and there are no exemptions. That's what you wrote in the email, but in our, in the mandate from DESI, it says all visitors are expected to wear a mask. And then also in, um, our COVID guidelines, it says all visitors are expected to wear a mask. So when we talked to the attorney, they said there are no exemptions for parents, and that would be because the DESI mandate is all visitors are expected to wear a mask. So in the state, there's, and by the CDC, there are exemptions for people in the, in the state and in the federal government.
But not in schools. The same thing will go for basketball games, volleyball games, um, the, um, plays and so forth. That's our expectation. They can access it in another manner. IP meetings, the same. Uh, we can do virtual IP meetings, but our expectation is that they wear masks.
So you have a policy or a law stating that?
I have the DESI mandate that it says they're expected.
The DESI mandate, Mark, where in the DESI mandate does it say, um, where in the DESI mandate does it say what you wrote here?
If, if it says must, then I could change it to expected.
Okay.
And then, then, but they, but they won't be allowed in if they're not wearing a mask. I think it's just that that's, that's how we operate with our schools. There are no exemptions for, um, visitors. There are exemptions for teachers and students, but there are no ex, uh, exemptions for visitors.
According to what policy that we have?
The DESI mandate, which we're following.
But the DESI, we are following the DESI mandate, but the DESI mandate does not say that, what you just said.
They said all visitors are expected to wear masks.
Correct. Yes, that is correct. They're expected to wear masks.
And if they don't, they won't be allowed in. And we did that for parent conferences, um, and to my knowledge, we had compliance. We had people following the expectation.
Okay. DESI didn't, DESI made a mandate, but there's no policy at our school or a law saying what you've put in these emails. And this isn't the first time that you've emailed this, so I think it needs to follow, I think we need to follow the mandate and what it says.
So what would that be? They're expected to wear a mask?
Yes.
I thought that's what, besides expected and must, is that the difference in the-
Yeah, there is a difference. Yeah, because there are, you know, there are reasons why people in the state and the country are not wearing masks.
And they can participate in the conferences virtually. They can watch athletic events online.
Okay.
All right. Um, and then, um, just want to give an update. West Bridgewater has been named in a lawsuit with 17 other districts in the state and five different counties, along with DESI. Uh, we are being represented by our attorneys, as well as the Attorney General's Office is representing DESI. The plaintiff is a group called the Children's Health Rights of Massachusetts. The plaintiff has requested a preliminary injunction asking this court to nullify the DESI, DESI mandate. Our attorneys did file a joint opposition and a separate affidavit for West Bridgewater due to the fact that we do not have at this time a mask, uh, separate mask mandate. And our attorneys are actively involved in the case, and as of October 31st, we have been billed $4,587.50 for, uh, for fees that aren't, aren't in our budget to fight this, uh, lawsuit. So-
Can I just ask a clarifying question?
Sure.
Um, so that $4,587.50 up through October 31st, um, when was the lawsuit filed? So just kind of give me an idea of-
I believe it was September 21st. I'm-
So that's just over a month.
Right. Um, we were, paperwork was dropped off, not officially served to us, but that's, the attorneys are taking care of that. Um, we have not officially been served.
Yeah, um, I'm sorry.
No, it's just thank you.
Out of the 17 other districts, we are the only district that does not have a mandate, so that separates us from-
It separates us. I believe there may be a couple other-
Is that what you mean? We don't have a policy?
We don't. I believe there could be, well, I think the majority do have a, do have a separate policy. We're simply following DESI's mandate.
Do you see that as an issue that we've been combined with the other school, the other towns, and with DESI when we, we have our own set of circumstances?
Yeah, I do believe, I don't want to speak for the attorney because they're much more knowledgeable than I, but I do believe that they're, they filed an affidavit stating that and potentially putting us in a different category due to the fact we don't have that separate policy.
Okay.
So it's helpful?
I believe so. Thank you.
All right, uh, on to our student representative update. Paige Pritchett.
Hi.
Okay.
On Paige.
So regarding the Spring Street School, preschool students enjoyed a special music class with Ms. Carey. You're fortunate to have her back this year. The WBFD visited the kindergarten students to talk about fire safety. Kindergarteners were fortunate to tour the fire truck and had fun spraying the hose. Officer Pope spent time at the kindergarten classes to discuss the role of the police in town and in the schools. The students were able to ask a lot of questions and check out the police cruiser and Kubota RTV. Thank you to all the families for helping us surpass our Booster-Thon fundraising goal. Kindergarteners did a great job at the fun run, and preschoolers danced their hearts out during the dance party. Kindergarten students enjoyed walking to the town library and registering for their library card. They were able to check out a book and listen to a story while there. Thank you, WB Library. Roseville McDonald's School. The Roseville McDonald's teachers and staff are excited to be welcoming parent volunteers back in classrooms. Grade three students had a beautiful day for their field trip to the Plymouth Musan. Their trip was a great way to bring their study of Wampanoag and Pilgrims to life. Thank you to all the chaperones that volunteered their time. Thank you to all our families for helping us surpass our Booster-Thon fundraising goal. The students did a great job and really enjoyed taking the bus over to the Emmet, to the middle, middle, senior high school track, and having their families and classmates cheer them on. Howard School. This past Friday, we had a great Halloween celebration that was combined with our monthly Pride assemblies. Staff and students dressed up and participated in the activities collaboratively. The Pride Assembly focused on respect and how we can all respect ourselves, our friends, our community, and our school. Students also engaged in grade level relay races. West Bridgewater Middle Senior High School Halloween Parade, Howard School Parade, and a Fun Friday Extra recess. In addition, on Monday, November 1st, the student council completed their canned food drive and delivered it to the food pantry. Loud shout out to all the students that came together for this charitable cause. Howard's students brought in over 1,334 cans in total. The following homerooms were the winners of the contest. Sixth grade, McLaughlin, with 600 and, or with 169 cans. Fifth grade, Peedy, with 160 cans. Fourth grade, Magnussen, Magnussen, with 290 cans. Another big shout out to Mr. Peckrell for organizing these efforts. In the middle, senior high school, the homecoming dance was a huge success. All students seemed to enjoy themselves. The class of 2022 did a great job parading to the elementary schools in their costumes to spread joy to the younger students. Seniors had a blast during their class trip to Treetop Adventures. We did. Financial Eight Night was held on Tuesday and was well inten, well attended by junior and senior parents. Lots of, lots of great information was given to the parents and guardians. Students had fun dressing up during Spirit Week. We will redo the day's loss due to the storm and march during our Pride Week. Senior Haley Devery held a cabaret last Thursday as her senior project, and it was a great performance. A pep rally was held on Friday to celebrate the beginning of the playoff season for our fall sports.
Thank you very much. Uh, on to, uh, business donations. Uh, we had some hand sanitizer donated by Mrs. Paula Bunker. Thank you, Mrs. Bunker, very much. Um, the Howard Trust STEM Grant, Mrs. Gulliver, just leave him.
Good evening.
Uh, so just a little background on the, the project that we've chosen. It's the LEGO Education We Do 2.0. It's an initiative hands-on solution designed to develop elementary school students' curiosity and confidence to solve real-life problems through engaging in STEAM projects. Our LEGO STEAM lessons challenge students to define problems, ask questions, and design their own, design their own solutions, setting them on a path to becoming lifelong learners. STEAM education fully promotes skills and attributes that successfully promote the 21st century skills required to succeed. Some of the skills we're focusing on are critical thinking, creativity, collaboration, communication, flexibility, and media technology literacy.
So all students K-6 will be able to use these materials during their STEM class, which is great because it touches every student K-6, and that was a huge thing that the Howard trustees wanted to make sure. Um, so they're going to create a unit of, you know, it's aligned to the state standards, and we're hoping that afterwards, their finished products, you can see some of the pictures, we're hoping those are what the end products look like, that they will be able to showcase those in a, you know, a yearly STEM, uh, science fair, and hopefully this is something that we continue from year to year. So a huge thank you to the Howard trustees.
The Howard trustees reached out to us, and we went back to the administrators, and I think they're looking to do this every year, is to provide a certain amount of money to fund things that service the children of West Bridgewater. So we, we really appreciate their support. As always, they've always been so generous, uh, giving back to the schools, so we're very thankful.
Uh, Howard School, uh, food drive, WB Food, okay, pretty, um, could, uh, correct food in Auburn? Do we have any other?
No, just, it was, it was pretty awesome to see, uh, all those kids coming over, great community support, um, but carrying those cans over and lining them all up in there. They, we filled up many a shopping cart, uh, and they were very happy, and they all did a great job, very respectful and great group of kids and staff.
I wonder how much that weighed, all those cans?
That's a lot. It was a lot.
It's a lot.
It was a lot.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's great.
An Inclusion Matters update, Mrs. Grayley?
Thank you. The mission of Inclusion Matters as West Bridgewater's Special Education Parent Advisory Council is to build inclusive schools and communities. We do this by supporting families of students with IEPs and 504s, and including regular education parents by offering advice, advocacy within the school system, and opportunities for education and community building through regular workshops and events for parents, guardians, and families. This month's event is in partnership with the WB Public Schools, the WB Boosters, the WB YAA, and the WB YFA. More and more students with disabilities are being included in public school classrooms, but sometimes our kids don't know what to say about disabilities or how to be a friend to their peers with special needs. Come learn with us. This workshop is designed for all families, not just those of children with disabilities. Promoting inclusion, promoting friendships, the role of families of students without disabilities will be led by Lisa Drennan, an inclusion consultant with over 36 years of experience supporting individuals with diverse abilities. Participants in this workshop will learn how to include as well as support our children in meaningfully including kids with special needs. This event will be held tomorrow, Tuesday, November 9th, at 7:00 PM via Zoom. Bring your kids, invite another family, and come see how inclusive friendships can really work. On Friday, December 3rd, we will be marking International Day of People with Disabilities with our annual Rock Your Socks Day in WB schools. Students and staff are invited to support Inclusion Matters with a donation and wear mismatched socks to celebrate how being different rocks. In the words of George Day, "Inclusion is not bringing people into what already exists. It is making a new space, a better space for everyone." For more information about Inclusion Matters and upcoming events, you can find us on Facebook at Inclusion Matters MA, or by visiting our website at www.inclusionmattersma.com.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Philsy High School's student handbook amendment, Mrs. Page.
Hello, thank you. I believe you all have the updated, it should have, like, yellow highlights in it. Um, so, uh, we, Mrs. Howard, one of our guidance counselors, had a very motivated sophomore student come to her, uh, her and her father, um, to ask about the possibility of graduating in three years. Um, my first instinct was, why rush your life away? Enjoy your four years of high school. But in sitting down and talking with her, um, it was very powerful. Um, she really is motivated. Um, she's a great student. She's a great stu, um, she's a great kid. Um, she's involved, and she really wants to, um, get over and do a gap year. She wants to graduate in three years. Um, and, and as you can see, it, it will, um, fulfill all of our graduation requirements. Um, it will take a lot of dedication and financial responsibility of the family, um, in order to do this. Um, so if you go through freshman year, um, she would have to accrue, or whoever this is, but for right now, it's a student, um, 40 credits, which she did. This year, she's on mark to get 40 credits. Um, if approved by the school committee, um, depending on when the vote is, um, she would need to take four college credits. E, um, the college classes are three credits each. When we translate that to our transcript, it would be a five-credit course. Um, so that would be the equivalent. Um, so she could take, uh, or this person could take it, um, a winter course, a spring course, and then two summer courses, um, at the end of the summer, which would be their sophomore year. So going into their junior slash senior year, they will have fulfilled in extra credits, um, to get there. Um, it does, in the junior, senior year, the third year of high school, they would need to make sure that they take the Contemporary Global Issues course, which is a graduation requirement here in West Bridgewater. Uh, she would have to fulfill her, um, community service 20 hours within that third year of high school, and she, um, she would also need to do her senior project, um, in that third year of the high school. At the end of the, there are other area schools in my social principals group, um, I did ask, and there are other schools who have done it. You know, it doesn't happen all the time, but there are those kids who are motivated to do it. And, you know, I really want to support her. Um, her goal is, she's applying, you know, if she's able to do this, is applying for, um, a, a year over in, um, Rome, um, to work with legal, um, and see the outside world and work over there with the legal, um, dealing with, um, you know, all the citizens over in Rome. Um, it's a great program. I, I really think she's motivated to do it, so, um, I wish her well if, if she gets to do that, if you approve this, um, policy. Um, and then, I'm trying to, I'm just trying to look here. So in the third year, now, everything mentioned above, so the college courses, and all these courses would need to be approved by us prior to enrollment in those college courses, uh, because we want to make sure, we're sitting down with our council, make, um, to make sure all the courses are aligning. Um, and at the end of, everything must be completed prior to the start of that third year. So all those college credits need to be completed and submitted to us in order to go into that third year, um, to wrap up the high school experience.
Why would it have to be completed before the third year? Is that because-
So that, because i, if the students aren't graduating in three years, we wouldn't have them going into CGA, starting their senior project, starting their community service, all those senior year obligations would have to start earlier. So, and I, we wouldn't want to do that, because then if it failed, if they didn't match up after their sophomore year, going into the third year-
They would go back into like a junior year-
Correct. They'd have to work through a junior track. So we need to know that everything's in place to be able to get into that, that senior track of those, of those senior courses.
This sounds amazing, but what if something changed and they decided they wanted to stay for a fourth year? Would this, would they be able to do that, or does that ever happen to people?
Um, I, you know, I'm not a betting woman, but I, I have all my confidence in this young lady. I really do.
Yeah, I think it's a great opportunity.
I think she's really, um, come forward and advocated for herself. I mean, her dad definitely called, but she came and advocated for herself. Uh, so I have no doubt that she wouldn't complete this, but we'd make it work. We'd figure it out.
There's other courses-
We'd figure it out.
Yeah. I'm, I'm very impressed, and I'm happy to hear that it was a student that brought it forward.
She did. She's great. I, I was going to have her come and speak, but then we wanted to make it more of a generic. I didn't know how the committee felt about making this a, a policy within the handbook, or have it be, um, you know, a case-by-case basis. But, you know, if approved, she would love to come and chat with you, so.
Would it be a policy, or would it be in addition to the handbook? In the, in the other districts you looked at, was it a policy, or was it a, was it a handbook?
And, and in my years of doing this, this is really the first, you know what I mean, in twice my years, I don't think it's something that will happen often. Um, but-
If it is that as the case, if it isn't often, should we end with it? Or, or it is a case-by-case?
Could we even have the poli, yeah, have a policy saying that we'll take it case-by-case? And maybe you have to be on the track to do this, but I don't understand where the four college courses are. I see in the outline, it says winter sophomore year one, spring sophomore year one, summer after completion, oh, two in the summer, sorry. See, this is why I did not graduate in three years. So, that, that should be part of the criteria. If they understand the policy, then they're good to go. Okay.
Do we have any other questions with the page? Would we like to approve, um, to the, as stated by Mrs. Page, the, for the handbook for right now for the student? Would we make a motion?
So would we actually put it into the new book, is this criteria, or?
This is going to be the handbook for right now, or this is, the change is into the handbook right now?
Yeah. Because the approval on here states, if I'm reading this correctly, which I might not be, um, states that it's by approval of the administration. So it's not-
For the courses.
For the, right, but it, I mean, you would have to get approval on the-
Right. You couldn't just do it, but, yeah. They need to come and have a conversation, and this, and then we-
Administration.
Right.
All courses. Oh, okay. So all courses have to be approved, but entering into it doesn't necessarily, well, I guess if you approve the courses in their sophomore year, then you're approving them to do it.
Correct.
Correct.
So I don't think we need a policy if we add this into the handbook.
No, they add it to the handbook right now.
Does that make sense?
Yeah.
We have a motion?
I'll make a motion to make this change to the student handbook as presented by Mrs.
Page. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
I agree.
Thank you, Mrs. Page.
You're going to make a one, happy young lady tomorrow. Can I tell her?
Hopefully she, uh, could come and, uh-
I definitely would, I would come, for sure.
She has some impressed school committee members.
Yeah. She can talk about what she, she's going to do.
Great. Thank you. Uh, approval of policies, the EDCFA face covering policy, uh, we're just continuing that policy, uh, on, uh, down the road. Um, warrants-
Meaning we don't have a policy?
We do not have a policy on that. We're not, uh, acting-
Not going to vote on one?
No, we're not.
Okay.
Uh, warrants on committee report, Mrs. Grayley?
The following warrants were issued and paid for the fiscal year 2022. Bill warrants on October 14th, 2021, for $176,978.39. October 21st, 2021, for $72,062.66. And October 28th, 2021, for $104,630.45. The following payroll warrants, October 15th, 2021, for $552,904.86. And October 29th, 2021, for $523,035.97. As always, all warrants are public record, and once signed, are available in the Sleckman's office for review.
Thank you. I have a comment, members of the audience- Of a comment, members of the audience wishing to address this committee may do so at this time. Audience members are reminded that personnel issues or issues that would violate student or employee confidentiality cannot be addressed during a comment. Mrs. Churchill.
Yes, I don't know your format for this. Do I do it from here?
Nope, right up there, um, the name and your address.
Sure, Sabie Churchill, two Corners School, Corners Lane. Um, I want to bring to your attention, I did send some email out, um, about four days ago, about our enrichment program. So, I'm coming here representing the Roselle enrichment, but I'm really asking about both, um, the one at Howard School and at Roselle. That program has run for twenty-two years. Started out as a grant under North River Collaborative, and then over the years, it's run as a self-funded program. Um, I'm happy to read the email, but I don't hope that's wasting your time because I did send it to school committee members. Do you guys want me to read it or just kind of touch on the highlights?
Could you just paraphrase it so that everyone knows what we're talking about?
Sure, so the shorter answer is, this program's been running a long time, but a change in the building use policy has now made that program not possible because it would require outside insurance. I've been back and forth with my insurance agent for about a week now, and we're between over a thousand, possibly over two thousand in insurance, but they haven't given me a final number. That program right now runs pretty lean. When we have kids sign up for a program, it tends to be five or six weeks, and it's about sixty dollars for a class. So, when you add all that up and you look at the program for, um, if you run one class at a time, our absolute max is like twenty-five kids. COVID would probably be a little different, I'd be leaner, I'd be smaller. Um, we have served as many as ninety kids a week in that program in past years, kind of pre-COVID. My concern is, I've had many families coming up to me asking, when is enrichment coming back? And my answer initially was, I don't know, we're going to let things iron out with COVID. But now with the insurance requirement, it's making our costs prohibitive. I can't open it to families if it's only the wealthiest families that can afford it. So, that's my concern, is that the whole money we bring in during the year is a, is a couple thousand dollars. But the, the insurance would be almost the same as what we bring in for the revenues for the classes. That's my concern. So, my question is, is there a way to bring that down, bring it into a new way possible so that whatever your insurance requirements are or your policy, is there a way to either add an addendum or something that would make enrichment possible? And I also have a question that Surround Care, I believe, is exempt from this, and I'm not quite sure why, because it's a similar program. We would run for about an hour, they run until six o'clock. Where you're on the same premises, you're serving the same kids. There's no outside kids attending enrichment. So, I'm just a little bit baffled about a couple of the decisions, how they flesh out, and is there a way to make this happen for our students? Um, the Howard program is directed by Sarah, um, O'Donnell, and she's run it at least the last ten years-ish. I don't have the exact numbers on that, but that's a, a successful program that's also run for over twenty years. So, I wondered if there's a way to kind of consider how to meet the needs of the school, how to meet whatever your policy is, and consider, is there a need that we can meet to make this happen? That's my question.
Thank you, Mrs. Churchill.
You're welcome.
Um, just, just follow, do we have any answers on the insurance or why, why this happened? Because I thought, I think someone said that, uh, you Molly, that we, um, existing programs under the, uh, building use policy, we were trying to keep as existing programs?
Right, I think when we made the changes, um, to the policy, uh, and this could have been, my bad. I didn't realize it was going to affect the existing enrichment programs. I thought when we changed this to require insurance for this outside entities, dance studios and things. So, I think, um, we had some communication going around, and hopefully, Mrs. Grant and, um, Mr. Yo and Mr. Bobo and I can set up time to meet just to discuss it further and kind of go through, um, to see if there's any, anything we can do. Um, personally, I might cancel those enrichment programs, and I think they should continue. I think they're beneficial to the students, so hopefully we can find a workaround, um, to be able to continue.
I think that's the best course of action, to look at that and see what, what can be done through that process, because we do appreciate the enrichment programs for our students, for our families. Um, we know it's, it's a very cost-effective way to engage them after school. So, we don't want to lose that.
Right.
But we also want to look at liability, consistency, um, any other concerns we may have, you know, potentially extra burden on our HR staff and our payroll staff. So, there's a lot of things we want to consider to, to make sure we're being fair and equitable to all. And I think sometimes, unfortunately, when you change something, some things may get lost or un, it's an unanticipated concern or problem that came up. So, I think by looking at it again, we can come to a solution, I think.
I hope so. I, I did have a question that just wasn't sure. If it's a question of staff being inside or outside, in Surround Care's case, um, the running of the program is by a person who's also an existing staff member. But that's also true with Howard School enrichment. Sarah's an existing staff member, she teaches the computer classes. So, that doesn't, the consistency, I have a question about, I'm trying to figure out, is it outside? Is it what we call the program? Is it the payroll piece, how that runs through HR? Like, is there a way to kind of look at that and find some sort of consistency? So that we don't lose it, yeah?
Yeah, Surround Care's always been, as far as I know, a revolving account that we, that we've established and we've, you know, we've paid our staff out of.
Sure.
Um, it, it's been a longstanding tradition of that. So, I think that's where it's a little bit different, because it's the staff, it's during the, it's before school, it's after school. Um, so I think that's why it's, it's treated, you know, differently.
Okay, so, I think from like a parent perspective, I never realized that it wasn't part of the school, like the enrichment program, and same thing like with Surround Care. So, I think, um, you know, like for myself, I know when looking at that policy, I didn't think like your program wasn't a school program. So, I don't know if that's how we solve that issue or.
Sure.
But, you know, so that, I mean, I don't, did you think of like those, like, you know, I know we talked about like the Girl Scouts, for instance, and, you know, from my knowledge of the community and parent perspective, I understand that the Girl Scouts is a separate organization than the enrichment that comes. But I didn't, I didn't realize something like that wasn't part of our.
It's a good, it's a good point, and I think some of the consistency I'm talking about is rate of pay for teachers, rate of pay for enrichment programs, they may be paid more than other teachers are for after-school programs. So, again, trying to keep that consistent. Uh, ideally, it would be best to try to offer, and we, we talked about this, to get it into potentially the contract, like other clubs and activities, more so at the middle senior high school, but at the Howard School, you have the Little Leos Club, um, because then it's run by the school, it's paid for by the school, stipends, pay the staff, and it's free. Uh, but we would still pay staff to work programs like that. That's not something we're going to probably solve right here and now, but that's a potential, something down the road.
Right, because you said free. What? Like, where, how would we pay for that? He, this program has always been something that's been paid for, but that's not unusual to, you know, like a field trip we pay for, but that's still by the school. Why would it have to be, why would it have to be, it wouldn't have to be free?
It wouldn't have to be, but if it, like the Little Leos Club, the kids don't pay for that, kids at the high school don't pay for photo club, they're just, they've joined that, and it's, it's in the, within the contract. Just, just putting that out there as a possibility.
Okay, all right. But, and then the other thing that, um, I know you pointed out in your email that this is something that's been around for a while. So, it's, um, I know we have other, we must have other building use policies out there that have been around for a while, that, you know, how did this one come up that there was an issue, whereas like something else that might be in the building all the time hasn't? Did everyone reapply for building use when we redid the, um, policy? Anyone that uses the building, everyone reapplied?
Mm-hmm, I, I believe so. I mean, if someone wanted to start a after-school weightlifting club, they haven't, but they're, you know, a teacher could do that. They could start a running club or.
But not someone that started, like anyone who uses the building today, is, or any of our buildings, has filled out a new building use form? Okay, great.
The one, I mean, I've only known the ones I've signed, so I've seen, I've seen who ones, if they haven't, I haven't seen them though.
Okay, all right.
Thank you, Mrs. Churchill. I'll give you some answers soon.
Thank you. Hello, Jennifer Eno, twenty-two Kingdom Street, as well as a teacher here in the district. As your conversation begins in regards to the building use policy, in your own, the enrichment program in particular, I kindly ask that you also consider Let's Go, Ready, Set, Go, and the STEAM camp that's also conducted, um, for our elementary students. Thank you.
And were all of these programs on hold due to COVID? So, like when we talked about these and looked at these policies, were we kind of not thinking about all these programs that are there because we weren't running them?
They did not run, correct me if I'm wrong, the last two summers.
STEAM ran.
STEAM ran the summer.
We have to, we were in the summer, yeah. Ready, set, go, ready as well.
True, Let's Go didn't.
Let's Go did not.
But those were prior to the policy being redone.
Okay.
Thank you, uh, no other comments? Questions? Uh, on to our other, uh, district-wide, our announcements, half-day and parent conferences, November nineteenth through the twenty-fourth. No School, November twenty-fifth and twenty-sixth, Thanksgiving break. District meeting, Inclusion Matters, November ninth, seven to eight thirty, it's a virtual workshop. PTO meeting, November thirtieth, at seven PM at Barracks, West Bridgewater. Athletic booth, November tenth, seven PM, in the middle, middle senior high school learning commons. Uh, student council meetings, uh, the middle senior high school, December sixth, two-thirty in the guidance office. Howard, November eighteenth, at three forty-five in the Howard conference room. Roselle, December seventh, three-thirty virtual. And Spring Street, December first, at three o'clock, virtual. At the middle senior high school, November ninth, MCAS Math Session One makeup. November tenth, MCAS Math Session Two makeup. November twelfth, Electronic Distribution of Report Cards. November fourteenth, Lions Club Craft Fair from ten to three PM. Uh, November sixteenth, MCAS ELA Session One makeup. And the seventeenth, MCAS ELA Session Two makeup. November eighteenth, Light Pitch, Light, Light Touch Pitcher Day retakes. Uh, November twenty-fourth, the Gridiron Football Dinner from five to seven PM. At the Howard School, November twelfth, is Electronic Distribution of Report Cards. November twelfth, also the Principal's Coffee Hour at nine AM. November nineteenth, Scholastic Book Fair, one to three, uh, is PTO sponsored. November twenty-second, Scholastic Book Fair, five to seven PM, PTO sponsored. And November twenty-third, Scholastic Book Fair, one to three PM, PTO sponsored. Roselle McDonald, November twelfth, Electronic Distribution of Report Cards. November nineteenth, the Scholastic Book Fair. November twenty-second, the Scholastic Book Fair, five to seven. And November twenty-third, Scholastic Book Fair, one to three, all PTO sponsored. Spring Street, November nineteenth, School, uh, Scholastic Book Fair, one to three. November twenty-second, Scholastic Book Fair, five to seven. November twenty-third, Scholastic Book Fair, one to three, and again, are all PTO sponsored. December first is the Light Touch Pitcher Day retake. Uh, our next regular scheduled school committee meeting will be December sixth, at six thirty PM, the middle senior high school. Do we have a, uh, motion to adjourn? All in favor? Thank you.